All right, welcome to the special meeting of the Fayette County Commission. Having this meeting today to discuss two different things. One is a follow up on the Paint Creek hazmat spill. And whether we fund and to what extent any additional testing. We've already done testing. The other thing is to discuss the issues ongoing issues with the Armstrong Public Service District, Armstrong Creek Public Service District. So first, we're going to start to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance with everybody to stand. But Will, will you lead us first? And we do have one set of our meeting minutes, the long elusive August 10th. I sent them to everybody before the meeting. And I have a motion, but it's cool. Meeting minutes from August 10th that I sent you guys.
Oh, yes, I've read them.
Okay, will you second the?
Yes, I will second it.
Thank you. All those in favor. I'll have the rest by January 4th meeting. Probably before you end, but. Okay, all right.
That term may carry you.
All right, so Pink Creek. They have once again my colleagues' information and public's postponed. The call that Dr. Stewart referred to last meeting. Where they were going to discuss the development testing. The test that they need to further test the water because the original test was proprietary for the company that spilled the water. And we're trying, we have a company that's developing a test to test it because to have more objective results, basically make sure that the data we have is is accurate. Canaw County had allocated $10,000. Dr. Stewart was able to inform the commissioners in an email after the meeting last week. $10,000 in the testing, development of the testing is supposed to take up to $5,000. And then any testing was going to be, what did she say, $200 or?
$500.
A site, 500 a site. So, so the question before us, I think, I mean, it sounds like Canaw County has already well funded the development of the test. It sounds to me like it's up to us to decide what additional testing we're going to fund once that test is developed, created. And, and Dr. Stewart thinks the reason Canaw County postponed this Zoom meeting once again, because it was supposed to be today, the next week is because the test isn't developed and they're just waiting for it to be developed. So then they can decide how to proceed. My understanding is the majority of the homes are on our side. The wells that need to be tested. Dr. Stewart. At the time, the concerns were raised about the additional testing. Dr. Stewart, and I agree with her, did not feel like we needed to do additional testing because we'd just gotten his results back. But the citizens and particularly one individual has been speaking for the citizens down there. He said, she said, has worked with them quite a bit. Has expressed concerns because they're seeing like bubbling when the rain hits the ground. And things like that. I, I feel like.
We put 10 back also.
I think we should, I mean, I was going to just recommend that we put something back.
Yeah, I think we have to put matching.
If you could give them. And we can't, we're not going to be able to tell them that their drinking water is safe, but we're going to be able to tell them whether that imminent is there. I mean, they'll have to make the decision about whether they want to drink it. Whether they want, you know, water to be delivered there and that sort of thing. But, but I, I think we ought to both vote on how much besides, are you moving to put 10,000 aside?
I moved to put 10,000 back for the test, second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye. So that's 10,000 and I'll let Dr. Stewart know unless you want to text Ruth or Amy. And then with regard to, let's make sure we instruct Kevin to stay in contact with the main person, is he on Zoom? Hey Kevin. Kevin, could, could you just stay in contact with that, the spokesperson up Paint Creek and about their ongoing water needs pending the results of this and add anything that I've left out or correct me if I was wrong, please.
Now, you, you are, you're spot on with everything and I don't know if everybody got the email or not that I sent back. But I did speak to the engineering in that area. They advised that the most, all the lines are in the ground, however, everything past the rest center down there coming back towards Mayhem. Everything north or south of that's going to require a pressure tank. And that tank won't be installed till spring of 2023. So they're still going to be, still going to be a little ways out before they'll be able to hook up to the West Virginia American Water down there. In that area, but the lines are primarily in the ground and that's what the whole, what the whole is going to be. We are in contact with the gentleman down there. He is the Vice Chair of the Watershed Association. He lets us know when they need water. We currently have one pallet of water left that was bought by D H H R. For those individuals in that area, my counterpart in Canaw County stated if they need, if we need more water, they could step up and help with water as well. But we have one pallet set aside and I have one pallet left in staging that I can move out if needed, but it's only going to be distributed if they request it and at their needs.
Hey Kevin, is there any place we could put a water buffalo down there, West Virginia American Water could put one down there in a, in, in, in a building? Or is there anything down there we?
Maybe not in, not in that general vicinity, sir, not where it could be kept warm.
Along those lines, does DOA shot have a facility along there or what about the rest area itself?
The rest area, the only way to access it would be, you know, go down 77. Get off there, then you have to get back on and go all the way around. All the way around. And it's the same thing, you'd have to go to standard to the, to the division of highways down there, the turnpike, and it's only open so many hours a day.
Does Paint Creek have a volunteer fire department?
Paint Creek does not. It's the closest fire department would be PAX. And then Pratt.
Well, you're the expert on that Kevin, so I mean, as long as you're staying in touch with them and, and fulfilling those needs, just bring to us anything that we need to know.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that we would, that I see would be an issue would be maintaining and keeping water flowing to them. If they request more individual bottled water. But as of right now, like I said, I have a whole pallet and then another half a pallet. That we can get out to them and we just took them another pallet about three weeks ago and they haven't requested anything since.
Well, if you need more water, that's within Ruth's spending authority. So just, just go to Ruth.
Will do.
Okay, and I, and I want to point out Kevin did raise one other thing, and that is that the, the residents of Paint Creek are going to have the option in spring of 2023 to connect to West Virginia American Water rather than use their well water. And, but that's, that's some time from now and they still need to have water in the meantime. So I think we've covered it and you guys are fine with Ruth using her spending authority to
I'm good.
Get water, okay. All right, so moving on to Armstrong PSD, John, do you want to lead that discussion?
Okay, Amy. There are some things that, that happened and it's due to a system that's been in the ground for 50 plus years. And, you know, the, the system itself is in desperate need of repairs or replacement. The PSD does have a scheduled project that'll be coming up. But we need to get there to that point. Some things that we had questions on was, the, the first thing was that the PSD refused help from West Virginia American Water in the form of a water buffalo when all this first happened. And when I talked with the office, I was told that the decision was made not by the water commissioners, but by the water plant operator himself. I have an issue with that. I feel that the commissioners are the ones that's in charge of that system and they should be making the, the decisions on any type of thing that's going on. It, it seems like the employees are running the PSD instead of the water commissioners. So that's my first thing I would like to hear addressed.
Who is, who is here?
He knew about the water, by the way. He was glad to get it, but we did not know that this was true. We didn't know that he called and canceled it. It was hours later that we found out that he canceled it. We would have had to put up with it. But he had no right to do that. But we can't. And that's not like it, you know. And hours later, we found out about it.
Hours? Was, was it hours after he, he had sent it back or was it that?
Yes, yes. Like he did, he called us after, made sure he made it, tell us that he canceled. He did this on his own.
Unilaterally.
Did anybody try to call and get it brought back? When you found out that he canceled it?
Can I stop you guys just for a second? Would you identify yourselves for the record? We have minutes. Okay, Mr. Gibson. And ma'am. How do you spell your last name? Newman, okay. I don't have my hearing aids and I'm sorry, I can't. She said Thelma Newman.
Thelma.
So, so Mr. Gibson, you, you're still the chair of the? You're still the chair?
See, I could. I was supposed to pick him up yesterday.
Are you still the chair?
Yeah.
Okay, will you come up to the microphone so people can hear you better on Zoom?
That would help, maybe help me hear a little better too. John has his hearing aids now, but I do not. Okay, so, so it sounds like the the commission wasn't involved in that decision. Have, have you since addressed the issue with the plant operator?
I haven't, I haven't, of course. It's got to know that he, he just. I don't know why he does things like this. If we had found out earlier, is, this wouldn't have happened.
Okay, and hey Kevin?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to get some contact information for these board members to make sure that when you are about to provide water buffaloes or something to them, that you can reach out to the board members themselves.
Absolutely, that'd be great.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do that to remedy that issue. Let him out there. I know you, you know, I know that's a skill that it's hard to recruit somebody to do it and he's going to know the system and then you got to balance that. But at the same time, we want to make sure the right people know the decision makers are aware of, you know, our ability to offer and we'll make sure you have Kevin's contact information. He could always call our front office.
That'd be fun, that'd be fun.
He's very responsive.
Commissioner Taylor, also, I do want it to be put on the record that it was offered to them, which you already know that, but then a decision was made once the citizens was not having water, that West Virginia American Water went ahead and deployed a water buffalo to that area in support of those citizens simply because we knew the need, we knew it was a holiday. And we was supplying water at any points that we could. The water buffalo was delivered, however, it was the tractor trailer size, so unfortunately it was parked in Adina Village. The only place it was really big enough to support that sized buffalo. In the beginning, we was only going to bring a 12,000 or 1200 gallon buffalo in, which is the midsize one that we used at the Page Kincaid PSD that could have been set at the fire department or off to the side somewhere. So there's citizens in Powton, but when it was offered, it was plainly stated, I don't think that that will go over very well. When the water buffalo was offered and denied. So I, I, at that point, I didn't know which other direction to go. And then that's when I deferred it to the county commission to let, to let you guys take it from there.
Yeah, and we just said, do it.
Do, do they notify you, does he notify you when there's an issue at the, at the PSD?
These ladies notify me on.
So if there's, if there's a water issue like that, again, you're notified, what is your? What is your?
That's his contact number.
What is your response in, in, when you have a problem like that, when the, when the customer doesn't have water? Do you try, I'm just trying to figure out a system that needs to be implemented through somewhere that if there's a problem, maybe somebody knows files Kevin or the commission or somebody that you do need access to water if there's a problem. I'm just wondering why that was never initiated when, when, if you knew there was a problem.
Well, because we had a rule of water down first, we just want to try to settle this ourselves. We usually have rule of water down Danny Vassal or Shane. And they come down, we try and, they're very good about finding leaks for us. And we tried to take care of it ourselves. And we looked, they was, they dealt with it on a Wednesday. Was out looking for that leak. And then the next day on Thanksgiving, we were out, I even went to the, the the old tank of Empowton that's going to be replaced. I climbed a rope about 200 yards up the mountain, up a cliff. And at 10 o'clock on Thanksgiving, I was standing on top of the water tank. I thought, well, maybe the tank, that's, that's it, we try to fix it ourselves before, you know. If we think we can do the.
Yeah, 14, I think 14 days is what it was, that's, that's a little, was it, some of these people without water for 14 days?
That's what we reported to us at the time. So it wasn't consistently off, it was just off and on?
On and off during, while they were trying to fix the system.
Right, so.
We kind of keep watering one place and look at this other place, then we keep watering this other place, trying to, you know.
Well, nobody likes to be without water. Look commissioner, and I'm also a customer. Everybody, a lot of people in the system. Renovates, like church members. I mean, this is not something that we're purposefully.
No, no, I'm not saying, I, I never said on purpose, but sometimes you need to implement stuff if there is a problem to make sure people does have access to water until it's fixed. That's the only thing I'm saying.
Well, that water buffalo, that's all. So then, like you said, to Adina Village, that was for West Virginia Water stuff. I'm sure anybody that again, had one.
Yes, it was, it was for.
No, so that's a, that's, that's just a misunderstanding because we have them deliver water buffaloes wherever we need it.
We did get bottled water in Powton. Fire department, which, which I don't know how to know, you know, trimming.
Well, let, let me, let me start by saying that this isn't, like, we're not out here to get people in trouble. What, what we're trying to do. Leslie from Region Four has already told us at a previous meeting that you guys weren't present at, that that you got that grant and some work is about to get started and that West Virginia American Water taking over would cause issues with that grant and, you know, we don't want to interfere with that. What we want to do, we got some, something more, Leslie, what's up?
Well, first of all, I did want to let you all know that we have some folks here with us from the PSD. We have Wendy Braswell and that one.
Okay.
But what I wanted to add to that was since the, the meeting that we were at last week. We had talked about submitting a request for changing cost and funding to the Infrastructure and Job Development Council. We did do that. Subsequently, we had a project call yesterday which involved folks from USDA and, and the entire project team. Yesterday USDA said that because of the distressed or failing utilities case that has been filed against Armstrong PSD with the Public Service Commission, USDA will not focus on their funding until that case is resolved. This means that our request for changing cost and funding was returned from the Infrastructure Council because we don't have a viable funding scenario with USDA's concern.
So what are the, what's the bottom line, where are the, where do we go from here?
Until the case is settled, the distressed and failing utility case is settled with the Public Service Commission. The, we're just on hold, the project is on hold. If we'll not move forward as long as that case is pending.
Okay, well, thank you guys for coming up.
I think, we, we actually did admit though, we're withdrawing from that. So we had our lawyer to draw the papers today.
Yeah, we've done.
To discuss from this, hopefully the PSD will see them and go ahead, you know. Dismissed it, you know, West Virginia Water, so we can finish this project at least. Because, like you said, these lines are not going to finish this. Until that's done, you're going to get a lot more off.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, and thank you, county commissioners. My name is Wendy Braswell. I'm Director of the Legal Division at the Public Service Commission. I was a staff attorney for many years and I worked a lot of cases with utilities that were having some issues. I am a co-counsel on the Armstrong Distress Utility Proceeding. Commission staff didn't file it, it was filed by West Virginia American Water, but we're investigating that. We intend to do that as expeditiously as possible. If you have any questions about the law or the rules or the statutes of proceeding, you know, the, the, the folks who are here from Armstrong with the county commission, I'd be happy to answer those. And if you have any technical engineering questions. Donovan Fowler from the Engineering Division is here and he'll answer any of those. Jim Wimmer, who's done a lot of the work with Armstrong over the last few months, is not available today, but Mr. Fowler can answer questions, they've shared information and consulted and they can do all that. So I, I do want to make sure that I share that information with folks. But what I will tell you is we, and I can talk here long, it's going to be a little bit about this. We are investigating the distressed utilities proceeding and at this time, we wouldn't bring that shit to this mess. Those are all legal issues and you're interested in different kind of issues, so I'm going to let folks talk about that.
To the, to the continuity of service, but I do have, I will have some questions for you later about some of all, all of this stuff because I know we've been dealing with you over Canaw Falls and, and some other things and, and Page Kincaid. So while you're here, I know, and the other commission probably like to ask you some questions too, because I know that we were we were asked to be a party to one of those things and I'm a lawyer too, so I kind of felt like that was premature, like forcing us to, to sign up and do these things at the time, since we were active in it and we're providing answers and, and overseeing it, working with Region Four, but those are some things I'd just like to ask you about, maybe at a break. And, but let's, let's get on with John's list here because we do have some stuff going on. And again, this isn't a witch hunt, this, we're just trying to make sure that, that, that you and your rest of your customers have water and access to water, so if it's intermittent, that we have a source for you and that you know the West Virginia American Water water buffalo is, is available to you too. And if for some reason, the problem is in this time of year, we have to have it indoors. And that's been the killer, because you know what it's like up at Holler, I grew up in Adina, so I, on the tracks, by the way, not by the river. And, and so I know what it's like up there and find a place big enough to store one of those, but it would be better because a lot of those people don't drive either. So, you know, we may need to do more and I'm happy to talk to you guys about, you know, we are about anything more you think we can do to help people get access to water up there. Because I think it's a big deal. So John, do you want to continue with your, your list?
Yeah, but right before Thanksgiving, we had several calls coming in and all the customers had one thing in common and that was no water or the water on and off while they were trying to fix the system. Because of that, customers were also calling the PSC, so that prompted Jim Wimmer to come in. And when I talked to Mr. Wimmer last week, he informed me that the tanks aren't holding water again. That there's more leaks. So he was very concerned with that and Mr. Fowler, he told me that you would be coming in at his place and that you could possibly address some issues that he discovered that he was very concerned about. So if you could address those, I would appreciate it. Mr. Gibson, if you let him have that mic right now, you can just have a Satan and we'll call you back up here in just a minute or two.
My name's Jonathan Fowler, I'm an engineer at the PSC and I work with Jim. Been heavily involved in the Canaw Falls and the Ohio River cases. Just getting started on the Armstrong investigation, I'm the lead engineer on that one. I think what Jim Wimmer was referring to was the fact that they couldn't maintain the tank levels, the tank levels were all down in single digits. And for some reason, they weren't able to keep the tanks full, which would indicate quite a bit of leak each or excess consumption someplace. I'm very familiar with the Powton tank and the need to replace that tank. It's, that's, project's been going on at the Infrastructure Council for about seven years. And it is funded now, however, as of yesterday, as Leslie said. USDA has indicated that they can't close on it legally because of this outstanding commission case, which was filed by West Virginia American Water. And Wendy could address how those cases progress. But they do take some time. So that's going to slow down the replacement of the Powton tank. During this investigation, we'll be looking at the practices of Armstrong. They've already done, or completed our first set of, their first couple of sets of data requests. And they are responding through their attorney. It'll take us some time to review all that data, they filed quite a bit of it. Initial impression is that they are a PSD that needs some help. I don't think anybody could have objected to that analysis. They have issues with the age and condition of the system. Treatment plant likely should have been retired 20 years ago. The Powton tank, I don't know what's holding it up there except the grace of God and some duct tape. It's, it's, it's very dangerous. Whether the Powton tank would be needed going forward is something that'll need to be studied. If the treatment plant is taken offline and a source comes from somewhere else, which are some things we'll be looking at. We'd have to evaluate, somebody would have to evaluate the hydraulics of the system and see whether that tank's still needed. It, it probably will be. Like I said, I'm just getting started on the review of all this. I have relatives up Powton, so I hear about it too. Anyway, any questions?
I got one. How long has this case been going on that West Virginia American Water filed? When was it first filed?
About a month ago, I think.
What standing does it have to file cases like this?
It, it's a customer, it purchases water from Armstrong for its customers at Montgomery High. So under the code, that gives it some standing.
Okay, thank you, I'm just curious.
The reason I ask that question is it might have been why the gentleman refused the water buffalo from West Virginia American Water, putting all this together in timeline. I mean, that, to me, that makes sense, I didn't know that.
Yeah, that, usually when these cases get filed, there's some, some part feelings and, you know, have to work through that. Our, our goal is to find the best solution for the district and the customer, you know, continuity of service, low cost, wonderful. And at, at this point, it's just too early prognosticate about what, what may happen.
You've probably heard or read that we were approved for the FEMA assistance, which is going to hopefully help Canaw Falls PSD with the prison.
Yes.
And all those issues of that way.
Yes, I have, I've, I've worked with DEP and help on the first assessments, the flood damage, so I'm familiar with that. In addition, there is a, Golly River PSD has an approved funding package, 100% grant funding to increase the capacity that they can receive from Somersville. So that's another piece that's all fits together, those three PSDs are all co-dependent on each other, or at least they could be if there was a line across the river. As long ago as 2008, Mr. Wimmer was suggesting a reinforcing line be laid across the river between Canaw Falls and Armstrong. So, you know, that's.
So it's going across Boonsborough Bridge right now, isn't it?
Yeah, that's, that line really doesn't have enough, that line is Canaan Falls to Boonsborough.
For the capacity of.
And there's a long way between Boonsborough and Deepwater.
I know.
And that's, that's some pretty rocky terrain. You know, in oh eight, when Mr. Wimmer looked at the situation, he could see the shape of the plant, and plant costs are really, really high right now. So, you know, one, one of the things the engineering firms will have to look at is whether it's more cost effective to bring a supply across the river or to upgrade the plant there at Armstrong. Or, and Canaan Falls plant is running at full capacity right now, too. Last time I checked, they were running twenty-three hours a day, and we're not even into peak winter demand. So there's a lot of concerns there, and the dynamics of those three systems all have to be looked at. Well, it's just going to take some time.
Has, have you seen an improvement in Canaan Falls since the new board took over? Because I know, it was before my time, but I've heard that there were some issues and that there have been some major improvements since we've had a new board on post.
Explain completely.
I know, that kind of answers it, I know.
Canaan Falls is, yeah, there, Canaan Falls is in the middle of a large sewer project. And they, you know, they're doing well with that. It's proceeded through to completion. They've had issues with securing equipment, like everybody does right now. Though, on the water side, I haven't seen any significant changes. Nothing's really gotten better, in my opinion, since last winter. You know, they were running twenty, twenty-three hours a day going into last winter. They're in that same situation right now. We have the same limited capacity from Somersville. We have no interconnection to Smithers. It's, it's certainly likely that we can have another outage in the spring. Things really haven't improved. What Canaan Falls has done, very positive step, is they have retained several licensed operators. They have went out and recruited. They have operators full-time and part-time. There's a big part of their problem last winter was they had one operator, and the poor guy slept at the plant for weeks. I mean, his, he hadn't seen his kids for weeks. They kept it running because it was a twenty-four hour day operation with one guy. Now, they have made improvements in staffing, so that's a positive. But if you're up to twenty-three hours a day, you don't have much to play with if you have a major leak or some sort of.
What should, what's the average? Like, what's a happy average for?
When you design a new plant, you want it to run six or seven, eight hours a day. As the plan approaches sixteen hours a day, the health department says you need to start developing a plan for what you're going to do to increase it. The health department doesn't enforce that requirement, but it is in their standards. So, you know, when the things get up to a two-shift a day operation, they need to be looked at pretty hard. Now, some plants are designed to run twenty-four seven. Most of West Virginia Americans' plants are variable flow rate, and they just adjust the plant, keep running twenty-four seven, because it's more efficient. But small plants like Armstrong and Somersville and Canaan Falls, they, you know, they should run five or six hours when they're new. And as they approach sixteen hours, then there should be a plan, a facility plan to expand that capacity or secure an additional. Somersville's got a ton of excess capacity. It's just in the wrong place.
And we've heard all about it from Mayor Shaker.
I bet you did.
He pins her here all the time on that one.
He's been, he's made the trip.
Yeah. Okay, you know, we've been told that if, if West Virginia American Water wins their case and the project is gone away, that it's going to take eighteen to twenty-four months before someone can get in there and start taking care of this water. I don't think that the system can last eighteen to twenty-four months. I think that there needs to be some emergency work done when, at this time.
I, I agree with you completely that there needs to be some expedient work done on that system. Same thing's going on at Canaan Falls. There were two issues at Canaan Falls. One of them was they had a lot of unaccounted for water, a lot of leaks all throughout that system. The second thing is their plant would back that. So anytime you get an increase in demand in the winter, line breaks and the tanks get low, it takes weeks to months to build back up. The same thing's happening right now at Armstrong. Their treatment plant's near capacity, although I don't think they're operating twenty-four hours a day right now. I'd have to check, or they can tell me. They have a tremendous amount of unaccounted for water. It's over fifty percent.
That mean there are leaks?
There are a lot of leaks, and there's several ways to look at lost water. The most direct method is something called non-revenue water, which is, you take all the water, you put in the system, and you subtract what's sold, and the difference is non-revenue water. That's a nice hard number with an easy calculation. And, you know, non-revenue water on both sides of the river down, I calculated Armstrong recently, but it's probably in the seventy percent of revenue water, which is about double what it should be. The commission doesn't regulate non-revenue water, but it's an engineer. We look at it as a component of water loss. What is reported to us is called water loss. That used to be called unaccounted for water, but now it's called water loss. Same calculation is, you take non-revenue water, that figure says ten million gallons, and you subtract out what you estimate you know was lost. Like if I had a, a main break and it was flowing a thousand gallons a minute for a long time, or a hundred gallons a minute for a long time, you can estimate how much water was lost. And you can go to the treatment plant and estimate how much water was blown out to clean sediment basins or flush lines. And you subtract those numbers and you get the bottom number that is water loss. That's a subjective number. You know, at best, it's subject estimation errors, and at worst, it's subject to, people falsify the number. We see that all the time. So, you know, with, when I see a very high non-revenue water, like I do in both those systems, something's wrong. And then couple that with the fact that your plant's at capacity, you don't have anywhere to go.
That's like something, like February, middle of the, kind of like with them also yesterday. And the three weeks that were mentioned, and then when you all were getting back home, about no water, there was fourteen leaks repaired in those three weeks. Wasn't like to come home without doing anything.
Well, yeah.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying you're accused, you know.
I understand. They, they do.
They were, I think it was good to be clear, okay? With the help of West Virginia American Water, Danny Vessel was Royal Water, our chairman of the board. I mean, our workers, it wasn't, you know, it was being taken care of, and a lot of it was even out there. And all those fourteen leaks, okay? Doesn't resolve the problem until the last week that we repaired. And now we're okay, you know, our tanks are pretty much full. Then Wimmer's up there today with our plant operator, and I think they told us before we left, there's twenty-one feet in Kimberly. That's a lot of water.
That's a really big way forward.
So, until we get this upgrade, every one of those fourteen leaks within the area, the location for the upgrade. So, you know, it's all about the upgrade, in my opinion. I mean, I don't know how you all look at it, but until that's done, no matter who takes, that's all I mean. Who comes in, that's a, there are a lot of problems with that. It, it was quite a bit, but now, right now, last few days, I mean, I'm hoping that, but, like I said, fourteen leaks in three weeks, and there was only one that turned a problem. It's all in that area that's involved in the project. And then you know where that location is.
Yeah.
Well, ma'am, I.
Until that's done.
And I, and I understand, and we're not sitting here saying he wasn't doing that.
I wanted to, you all know, what we're doing.
Well, my, my big issue was refusing help. That's what, that's, that, that was, that was my big issue was.
I know what you're getting.
Whatever.
We had no control of that. I didn't realize that.
Hey, the plant operator that would need very much.
I'm not saying, okay, if there's a problem, that's why I mentioned to you, you have a procedure that if he notifies you, I was trying to give you a hint, that if you have a procedure, that when he notifies you, the first thing you do is see if there's something available in case this is more than an hour or two, or in case it's on and off for fourteen days. That's what I'm, that's what the points that I was trying to make in, in this. The refusal of that was really, you know, I had, I told him to call my phone every time it went off. I gave my personal number to some of the people down there.
I've been there thirty-three years.
No, I. Well, no, I just. Well, when somebody refuses help, and then, and then somebody else pays for it, that was my biggest issue.
Oh, it is. I understand. It isn't done.
And listen, we, we understand the dynamic in these small P S Ds. You've been running for a long time, usually probably under budget, because you don't want to raise rates for people who can't afford, probably can't afford the rates you have. I mean, I, I grew up down there. I understand exactly how it is. I mean, I know, and, but in the long run, of course, then you're faced with being behind on being able to do the ideal, which is what you're talking about, you know, expand at a time. You know, we pay all of our taxes, and then we have to beg for money back for these grants for stuff that we should be able to do with our money. But that's the reality, and, and without raising the rates, of course, then, you know, you're given a hardship now or a hardship to yourselves later, is what you're choosing. And, and I understand that's not easy, because we're in here all the time dealing with stuff like that. So nobody's criticizing what you've been doing, and I also know there are probably several different iterations of the board that exist now during the timeframe, all these decisions were made too. You know, so you're, you know, just like us, we're being held accountable for stuff commissions past have done. You're being held responsible for commissions past. But the question now is, and what Commissioner Brennaman, he's just telling you what he, he studied this and talked to some people and came up with some things, and he's just letting you know things that he learned. And, and now we just need to figure out how to help you along now and make sure people have water and non-revenue water.
Can we just talk about help?
Yeah.
We're open for help. Well, everything else that I can say is the project.
Right, and, and it sounds like there's been wrench thrown in that, so, so that's.
Rating period, that's the problem there, and unless you have quite a bit of money, it's not going to be even a rating period. I don't know what's going to help, but I'm.
Not good.
It's not the money, child, it's not that.
The left side, the line, the next, we're going.
Yeah, I don't.
It's, it's, it's one leak.
Another one pops up.
And then you got the fieldwork, up and down the road, because this is a monthly. Because Royal Water itself does water, Danny Vessel, he has found some good leaks.
So surely, this happens statewide at these small P S Ds, right? But how, how do we help them without just saying, you know, we're just going to let this big company come in and, you know, how do we balance those things? Because this is, you know, shutting these down, that's revenue to the county, that's jobs, you know.
It's still going to take about the same number of people around it, so, you know, you're going to still have the field workers there as far as jobs.
Assuming they.
Yeah. It, it's way too early to, to say whether West Virginia Americans, assuming ownership is the right answer. Nobody prejudges that. It's not always the right answer.
Except West Virginia American, it's.
Well, you know, they like to expand, and they, a lot of reasons why they like to expand. You had asked a little bit ago about this eighteen to twenty-four month timeline. Let, let's say that the, the failed utility case had never been filed, and you got the project approved, which it is, and you asked for additional money, which Leslie just did. And that would have all proceeded accordingly and probably been approved by the council early next year, January. You're still looking at probably twelve months or more to see any improvement in that system, and it's probably more, because that project involves a couple of miles of line replacement and a new tank. It's hard to get bikes right now. It's hard to get a tank right now. And the, the, the smaller components, the control systems are even harder to get. Canaan Falls had a hundred horsepower motor going with it. And we had to write a letter, had to have two state agencies write a letter to the motor supplier so that he could steal one from another customer, because the little tiny thermosisters that go inside the motor weren't available from hand or time. So, I mean, that's how bad the supply situation is. To, to build that new tank, get it in service and replace that line, let's say they bid the job in February, best case. That if, if this was never filed, bid the job in February, you're about three months out the time you award contracts, and you accept bids and go through all the process with USDA. So you're awarding contracts in April, March, April, May. And then the contractor is going to have at least a year to complete, because you just can't get it all done any quicker than that, particularly the tank. You know, tanks are taking a long time to procure and to build. A mile or two alive, and you can get that, right? It's a lot better than it was a year ago as far as availability of pipe, but, you know, your, your best case, you're looking at probably May of twenty-four, where that new tank would be in service. That's best case, assuming none of this ever happened. You know, there are alternate timelines. It can go with different approaches, but under the state purchasing requirements, you really can't compress that very much.
What if, what if it's declared an emergency? I mean, the purchasing requirements are waived if there's state of emergency, we can ask for state of emergency for people who are going to need that water.
The, the tank, the, well, I know the Pouten tank is probably is an emergency. Now, whether that puts in salary things or not, I don't know.
I think it might, I mean, just, we've had to declare them a couple of times lately because of the flooding and, and the fire we had.
The, the issue with the funding for that tank is that under the infrastructure code, the definition of emergency is different than it is under state, running to that before. You can get an emergency declared for infrastructure funding, but it has to be something to do with an economic type of emergency, I believe. We, we did that one time for the new plant in Jefferson County. They declared an emergency and awarded contracts.
I think you could probably justify both. I mean, from what I know.
I think you could, I think you could go that route. I still don't know if you're going to. You know, you might speed it up a little bit, but you've still got the availability of a tank, all that steel, coating systems, everything that goes with it. You know, if you had enough money, I mean, if it was a private company, yeah, you could, you can do it in eight months, six months. Work with both sides of the fence, so. You know, you might cut it in half if you were able to get it, declared an emergency and, and avoided a lot of the purchasing requirements. But then you're not eligible for USDA funds if you do that.
Because it's a process of.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's a possibility. You could split the project. You'd have to talk to the project engineer. I don't want to talk for him, but the, the real problem with Armstrong is everything's old and worn out. The, the lines are very old. Like he said, some of the lines have just patch after patch after patch. And they do what they can to keep up with it, but it's a big job. And a lot of that line needs replaced. It's not in this project. You know, you just can't afford it. That's where you get into looking at the economics, you know, whether it's better to combine things.
So you're saying there's more line that needs replaced besides what's in this project that's.
Oh, yeah. There's, they've got an awful lot of old line, and this project has apparently a small amount of line replacement. Because they're trying to keep the cost down to keep the rating back down. That's the catch-22 you get into. The system ages and costs go up with time, and things that have been replaced, like the treatment plant, don't get replaced.
Has it been scoped down already? Have you guys, even though it wasn't included, Leslie, even though it wasn't included in this grant application, do we know what that pipe replacement costs? Like if, if any, if we were able to supplement or we were able to try to get some of that supplemented?
Has the next project been scoped, I guess is what you're asking. And I don't know, because I haven't gotten all the data responses for future projects.
Did we scope out the whole thing and just say, all we can afford is this? So.
I don't think that was the route that this project took. I think the previous project might have done that. I don't think that was the route that this project took, I think the previous project might have done that. As they did a line replacement project a few years ago, pretty good size one. But there's still so much old stuff in there. And the treatment plant is going to be an issue going forward, no matter what you do with the lines. Do the lines need replaced and upgraded? Yes. Does the treatment plant need a longer capsule? And it's maybe about four and.
And this project was for the treatment plant?
No, this project didn't do anything at the treatment.
So the treatment plant's not a part of this plant?
Just line the tank, the new tank was the driver of this project and it included lines in that area. That needed replaced and they had to move the tank. Where the current mountain tank is, when you talked about going up a road, you, you have to pull yourself up the hillside with a rope. You get to it, I don't know how they ever built it, probably with mules. And there's not even a road to it and. To, to find a suitable tanks like that, to move it, have the model set over to the head of a hall. It's, it's. It's the second worst I've ever seen. First had the bottom rod of it and there was some emergency money put into correct that. There is an emergency funding program available through the Infrastructure Council, uh, but it's pretty limited in scope. Replacement of that tank would really be pushing it, but it wouldn't hurt to ask.
Is, is that something you would do on our behalf?
She's been successful getting money for Knott Falls.
Well, why don't we, I mean, and we can get together with Leslie. Talk about steps forward, I mean, what, what do you think we need to do now? Does anybody have? You guys said you'll take the help, what, what do you think you need now to keep things going for everybody until we can? He can finish evaluating and make recommendations and that sort of thing.
Say twenty people. By, as long as it's closed. About water, when the pressure goes on there, it opens up, that's when it moves it off. And it's hard to find.
We're familiar with that dilemma already from other things. So, I mean, what, what are, does anybody have recommendations moving forward? I mean, we've, we've got a wrench in their plans for funding. So what do we do? Do we feel it to the Infrastructure Council? Do we bill it to the PSC? Do we?
So that is a decision that you'll have to make, you'll have to decide how you want to approach it. Um, and you'll have to do that, no, the point is. So we have to speak over whether the project's. Okay, so if the project's approved at the commission, nothing needs changed there. I, I think the problem is bondholders are concerned about lending their money to this district. And so they are kind of holding up, this is a project that's kind of been around about six years. Um, so it's been out there a while, so you may wanna talk to the funding agencies. Um, you may want to talk to, tell to Interior Inspector Council on, on those issues. But I will tell you, you know, on the hat of commission staff, we'll keep processing our case. Um, and we'll keep moving forward with that. But I do want to, in fairness to you and the special workforce who are working and the people. Let you know there are other issues out there that we're looking at. Just beyond mountain tank and the on this immediate project, eventually there's going to need to be. A need for a placement of a lot of treatment. And you know, we have concerns, is that the right approach? Is something else the right approach? And there's also a history of violations, um, from Bureau of Public Health. Uh, against Armstrong, that's something we'll be looking at with distressed utilities case. So you know, folks, we're hard, we appreciate that, you know, we encourage you. And you know, I think your county commission, you know, is willing to support you with your emergency services, they're willing to support you. The commission has rules, um, about water outages and replacement water and emergency water. Um, the district might wanna talk to their law, to their lawyer about that, if they want to. Um, and their lawyers agreeable, they might be able to call our informal assistance section and even talk to somebody about that. But there are rules about that, so to think about that in the future and just to decide how they, how they'd like to proceed. But we do have concerns beyond the immediate situation, although we appreciate people who are working hard for that staff.
I have one last question. During this process of your investigation, could the PSD file for an emergency rate increase? To help with finances, to address employees, equipment? Anything that they need in order to keep these leaks from happening?
Absolutely, the PSD can file anytime, um, can file a rate application for an increase. Without regard to whether there's a distressed utility proceeding or not, but I'll tell you, you know, that's frequent, something that frequently happens. During distressed utility proceedings, there's a process that allows them to file something called a nineteen A. Uh, where they submit, they just submit the request and commission staff calculates rate recommendations and make the rate, makes the rate recommendations. Um, and there's a process where they can hire an accountant to put together, um, an accounting exhibit to justify a certain level of rate increase. And they can do, you know, whichever one they're interested in, there's even a process that allows them to apply for something called emergency interim rates. And those are on an interim basis, subject to refund, but they are to really to make sure that, uh, utility that's filing. That may have a deficit, doesn't have to wait for final rates before it gets regularly.
Thank you.
That's a lot of good information.
Yeah, it's great information, some things we weren't aware of. Or I wasn't, I'm a bunch of you together. But I, I would recommend. Filing that emergency rate increase because if you're losing seventy percent water. Supposedly at, at your, you know, through the plant, you're processing this water, you're treating this water, so you're losing chemicals. Uh, you're losing a lot of money there. Plus, how many employees do you have that actually work on the water lines right now?
Not including yourselves, I understand.
You have four, are they all full-time? Okay, so you have, how many full-time employees? That work on the lines? And that's the water treatment plant operator? Okay, so you have one water treatment plant guy. And he's full-time or part-time? Okay. And they're all part-time?
How many customers do you have right now? That's Montgomery Heights. And then everybody else is up the hollow.
Terry, would you like to ask any questions or make a comment?
I wouldn't have these guys job, I was one of that water company when there was still a boy. Uh, I guess that's my still in the day. It's a nice little job, but. Our water might as well have been off for two weeks, but they're in the line, two weeks, I would get up, but they're in the line. I just would check around my line, keep drinking on water night all the time. And I think, my opinion is West Virginia water, I've been in both places, never had enough research, they train people. And they, what you said, they would want to, West Virginia water are very trained job. It's just a rock and hard place there. If the, how many field workers you have, I know one of them was. Very experienced, Michael Don, cause he's still on. He was, he knew about where everything was, but uh. I don't think he ever had, like I say, they just keep. They get them trained, they move on.
I'm glad the sheriff left the room, actually, when you said that, because he's, that's what he's going through with his deputies, you know, we lose them to kill, we lose them to everybody. Um, who can pay more, the state.
And I was reading on Facebook, well, God, or somebody made a comment that, well, we don't want our rates to go up, we wanna keep. We don't wanna have, have anybody lose a job. But PSD is not about, you know, pay for jobs, provide water. And I don't drink the water yet. Go. The wigs there, there in the line, I still have come out of the valve, there's a, there's a motor about. I'm sure probably excited to drink, but that's just, just dealing over about. A pouring on water. I had called, that's another fact, about the two weeks, I tried calling off, but. It was difficult, we need to boil water, got a big leak and I was. The end of the first twenty people on place, but that's something you do from all day. And if it comes back on, I'm not gonna complain about, I know everybody's up there in their line, it shouldn't be drinking. Uh, when the boil water was put up, first time only had air in the line.
Is there still a boil water advisory out? Should there be a boil water advisory though, because we have all of these leaks? Mr. Fowler?
Not, not my area of expertise, only the health department can answer it better. The, the, before you can lift the boil water, they have to prove the water's safe factor logically. Uh, they've done that.
Okay, thank you.
You guys are testing it at, at the plant, right, when you have to justify going back, take, withdrawing the boil water, right? Given what you're seeing, I, I'd kinda like you to take a sample of health department, if you would, just so we can try to. I mean, you know, we, we went through that chemical, we had all those mines up there and everything else, there might be a contaminant somewhere. That they are not able to detect.
Certain times of the year that you can smell the water and it smells. You know, and, and you know, like, we don't drink the water, we buy bottled water and just the water. We bathe in it, we wash our clothes, we do get into it, but it, really as far as cooking or drinking, we buy water.
Right, and, and it's unfair because I, I drink my water, I refill my water bottles out of my faucet and drink it. Yeah, I think, I mean, like.
They will water, no artists. I bet they would never. Probably without a closet anymore when I worked on that, I lived in ninety thousand and I had one in ten years after that. But I know it takes a lot, and I'm one of those, I don't know about spare parts, I know one. Too long ago, had a trouble with a motor. And wanted to rebuild. Played about a week and a half with Montgomery. And. I have a little brother, just had a, electrical company, he got him one the same day. And I'm sure they deal with the same people that they dealt with for years and maybe additional, that's about parts and getting stuff rebuilt. I don't know about all that, I have been around a water plant for years.
I, I do know, when we called, like we called about leaks, they were right there, jogging on the spot coming up the thick bit, that it was in our field. And they took care of all that, the ladies in the office have always been very.
All right, um, well, I think, I think we're gonna need to work with region four and, and the board to figure out what to do about this. Grant and with the PSC, figure out what the findings are and see if we can proceed and if not, come up with a plan, I mean, I think you guys need to discuss that. Uh, on your board, you know, what you think, all things considered, what you think is best for your customers. Um, because, you know, while we would love to keep our PSDs operational, the reality is. You might not get the money, I mean, we're seeing an example now where, you know, your problems, you're trying to get money to help you with your problems and then that's being held against you. Your problems are being held against you and you're not gonna get the money, so people don't wanna invest in a failing system. And, but you can't fix a failing system without people willing to invest, so, you know, I, I think. Um, I encourage you guys as a board to get together and. Um, and with whoever, with Leslie or whoever you wanna work with, the, to come up with some ideas and make some recommendations to us, because. We have, we have some standing with the PSC and we can come in and. Give them our opinion on what we think should happen once we have more information and, and. You know, I think originally with regard to all three PSDs, we were, um, Golly River, Knott Falls and, and you guys. That we were inclined to try to do what we could to help you and, and keep the PSDs operating. If it wasn't a detriment to the customers. If not, you know, just like we did with Paige and Kincaid, and I know you guys live so close to them, you know what's going on up there. Um, you know, sometimes we just have to let go. Um, if, if, if we can't win the fight, if there's no way to win the fight. You know, sometimes it's better for the people you're trying to defend to go ahead and just say, okay, you know. You guys, you know, you're as affected as everybody else by this. And, um, and I'm concerned that, given the amount of money that needs to go into your. Um, system up there, that, um, nobody's gonna give us that. Um, I'm worried about that, because they already took back what they said they would give us. And now, you know, they're not gonna give us more, cause then they're gonna say, well, they took that back, you know, we're not gonna give you funding for anything else, so.
I mean, even if we just kept the money, we already. The reason the project is higher and we need more money is because of that tank. You know, now they have to redo, well, we've had COVID, maybe two years of COVID. But now we're. Got a little, little tank, the price of the tank is up, you know, it's way more than we budgeted.
Right, and I, I suspect that's just gonna continue to be the trend, I mean. I really don't, haven't seen any prices go back down, even though most people are back to work. So COVID has been a reason to go ahead and inflate everything and just leave it there, from what I can tell.
So they brought that down to twenty-two cents, and cheaper.
There was a lot of different factors, the retaining walls have changed to a different thing, the location, the, um.
The geologic conditions there, and overall total performance increases, all materials.
So, well.
And, and I was saying that, we, that, while that increase was a little bit shocking, that cost us, we really had to get updated sixty seven years. You know, considering the conditions, the way they're all.
Just what they needed, if you're interested in reading.
The cause, the cost definitely, so, I mean, even without, you know, you have. Even if it wasn't set for a long time, then you see those increases, I mean, in projects that, that we did years ago, that, that laid the onus. You see that, and, but then you have next level to, and you're going to learn worse. So it does make it.
Well, um, what I, what I'd like to request is, is that you as a board get together and, and come up with some, you know. Ask yourself the hard questions and, and come up with some ideas about what you think. You know your system better than anybody. If anything can pull you out, if you were able to receive funding for this, that, and the other, in X amount of time, if anything, we're able to pull you out of that, what that would be. Um, and if you think it's realistic, um, because it sounds like if we tried to, um. Ask for an emergency declaration from the governor or something like that, or through the infrastructure, um, option. We might be able to get it fixed faster, but it would probably mean the demise of a PSD. And so, you know, I'd like you guys to discuss that and, and come to us with any, you know, your recommendations in writing, so we know what your stance is. Because we're going to have to make decisions and representations for the PSC, and we want to be well informed by the experts when we do that. Um, that doesn't mean we'll necessarily agree with your recommendations, but it does, it, they are important to us. We do want to know what we have to say and what you think. Um, and I know Leslie will work with you on what's available, so you can make a fully informed decision. And then to work with us to make sure we make a fully informed decision.
Ms. Brasswell, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, not that our decision is binding or anything, it'd just be what we recommend as a commission, as somebody who has an, an interest.
Ms. Brasswell, how, how likely is this just to say, hey, we've done this investigation, this is what we found? Go ahead and proceed with your upgrades.
I can't tell you that.
I, I can't answer that. I can tell you this, I know you see situations all the time, and you think it may work out a certain way, and it works out a completely different way. So, you know, I, I can't tell you that, you know, I, I, I can tell you, it sounds like people are working on funding for a discrete project. And they've talked about it, you know, there are other needs beyond that, um, but it sounds like that people are, you know, interested in looking at some issue, that's always positive. But sorry, that's a couple of those.
Do you think West Virginia Water would want to take us over annoying that they would have to put this kind of money up front?
I don't think it wants to do anything where it has to put in money, and it's not going to get everything it wants out of it, I mean. Seeing how it's operated and some other things, you know, we want the water, we don't want the sewage, you know, just.
So what does that mean, disaster, what does that lead me, all of that?
Well, the way, from some of the discussions we've been privy to with Knott Falls. One of the options there was they were talking about taking over the water and leaving the PSD to run the sewage. Um, with you guys needing the plant and everything, um, maybe that would mean that your funding, you know. Request should go toward getting the plant upgraded and not water tank. I mean, I don't know how engineering work, I know he's looking at me like I'm crazy, I don't know. I don't know how these things work, but I'm just saying that that's, that's what I'm, that's what we've seen before, at least with Knott Falls, they've talked about maybe taking over the water. And up at Paige, King Pay, they're supposed to take over both, and now they don't want to take over sewer. Um, so that's, that's something that, you know, we've come across.
What's wrong with the plant? Well, this is our one, what's wrong with the plant?
Well, I'm, I said, I'm writing the beginning of my investigation, but that plant's very old, it's, it's steel. It's packaged filters in steel vessels. They're likely severely corroded on the inside, and you can't replace that. Basically without constructing a whole nother unit right beside of it. The, the outside settling basin, as falls rusted through it. I'm sure that when I get in there, the electrical and control systems are going to be outdated, need to be replaced. It's not unusual plants of that vintage, that are, they're, they're useful, right? Lincoln County is the same way, Knott Falls is the same way, I could go right on down with. Uh, you know, these plants were built forty years ago, and they were disposable plants when you built them, because you had the same issue. Of trying to keep construction costs low, so rates wouldn't be too high. So you don't build a big concrete, reinforced concrete structure to house the filters. You buy a steel tank, and they bring it in on a truck and put it in place. Uh, you know, if you went to Charleston, looked at that plant, which is a whole nother level, that's all reinforced concrete. Uh, that plant was built to last a hundred plus years, whereas these plants, the problem with them is they rust away. Uh, and you can't maintain the inside of these steel pressure, or these steel filter vessels, without taking them out of service for a long time. They don't have that capability. You know, these were, uh, plants were built to, to meet a certain budget and to last about forty years. And we're at that period right now. Uh, and I'm, I'm kind of getting there myself. I, I worked on, I worked on the Knott Falls Water Plant when I was with contractor, and I built some of the, I built the pump station in Adena Village, when I worked for a contractor. So I'm seeing forty-year-old facilities ready to be retired. You know, I always tell people, when you live long enough to see a forty-year bond paid off, it's time to retire. But, but that's what it is, is that, you know, it's a cycle. Uh, you don't invest a huge amount of money upfront, because you can't afford it, and in forty years down the road, you've got to replace. You, you can't keep rebuilding them forever, they corrode away.
And, and we're seeing that across the state with multiple PSDs, it's just not one specific.
Right, well, you know, there was a lot of money in the sixties, seventies, early eighties, and a lot of these facilities were built, now we're getting back to the replacement site.
Did the mines build those, or? I just wondered, because they, it was the mine at home, so it'd be in service by a lot of these original.
We, we have replaced a lot of mine systems, uh. The one, the, most of them are built this way, you know, wooden tanks, wooden filters, uh, still in service. Well, the last wooden tank, I know, just went out of service last year. And, but then you get into some situations, the water plant that was built for Gary, West Virginia, McDowell County. I mean, it's top of the line, it's sixty, seventy years old, and could easily rebuild, be rehabilitated. Because back then, US Steel built it with all reinforced concrete and brick, uh, but that's the exception. A lot of my career was spent replacing mine systems, Boone County, McDowell County, Wyoming County. So, you know, they're, they're, everything's getting older and needs to be replaced, and. One, one thing you have to look at very carefully before you build on a new treatment plan is whether that's the right thing to do. You know, if there is a system nearby that has excess treatment capacity. Uh, you want to evaluate very carefully whether you tie into that system or whether you build a new one. Uh, and the Infrastructure Council right now has two projects before them, before their consolidation committee to do just that. You know, two proposals to build new plants when there are adjacent plants next door that can handle the demand. Uh, because when you build a treatment, and it costs a lot of money to keep it operable. Uh, there's a lot of replacement costs, and you have to factor all that in, but I, I could stand up here and talk about it all afternoon.
Guys, have any more questions?
We don't, I don't have any problems with an emergency rate increase. But tell me how that's going to help the public area immediately, because they need to meet their health. How's that going, y'all? He's talking about we need a new treatment one. I know that does not happen, but again, I don't have a problem with the ratings. And if that's what's needed to be done, we'll do it, but it's going to raise the customer's bill even. And I don't know if, I'm sure you all know that deep water rates, because I was having. The sewer on a bill, most people don't look at it as sewer than water, they look at it as the water bill.
That's what I looked at, huh?
They look at it as the water. I feel wrong, and not that I'm here to, you know. Don't depend on being at the PSD to pay my bills, and, or, like, if I do, I see. But the water, my water bill itself, brings anywhere from a hundred and eighty dollars, and that includes the sewer. So, one of these, Bay County is a poor county. I mean, it hit me years ago, when I was in a court hearing procedure, and mediator, but a year and we had to have a media issue. You know, in other words, she was born in the month of, Bay County is a poor county, so don't be expecting a whole lot of money out of this. So Bay County, especially our county, is a poor county. And again, if we have to raise the rates, we will do that, but it's only going to make customers probably angry again.
Because they're not getting the service for the rate increase, they're not getting, yeah, not getting service for the rate increase. And I, and I understand that.
Also, I don't think it will do any difference. People wouldn't be able to afford it, I mean, in American water, what would they do, they would look up to our water line, they would.
Yeah, they'll raise the rate, I'm sure, yeah.
And other section rooms, like, what they have indicated is, um, that they would probably attend the river crossing to provide the supply. Now, that would be paid for, you know, through their rates, you know, and all the West Virginia American water customers in, in the state. But if you want to talk about the nineteen A process, you know, I'm willing to tell you about that process afterwards, you have a, in mind, you can talk to her about it. That is a process that's not be done informally, even without water, without, so I'm, I'm willing to talk you about it in a, for a, you know, with the commission, he can give you more information.
I, I know, so these people often keep the rates down, that's the one for board, I guess, if they've been there. But it's catching up with the staff.
Um, what is this increase thought of? It's what, you know, what is it going to do, you going to come up there and chase the run, is that fault, we're going to be ran across the river immediately? From my understanding, the last time that was addressed, the poor engineer, something about the muscle, from going to the mall, and that may be wrong. You all recall anything like that, something about, did the wife go far across the river, or, did any of you also major with that?
I talked to you after the meeting, I wanted to make ready to explain how that process works. And, and what the law requires, and what the, they play, to the citizen operating, particularly emergencies.
Do we have any more questions, the commission? All right, well, I'd like to ask the board to, to do your due diligence and make some recommendations to us, please. Um, and, um, we're going to follow up with you guys, talk to you after the meeting, and get some contact information, Leslie, if you could stay. Um, and you guys want to revisit this in January?
We can.
Can, can you guys get the recommendations to us? What's the second meeting?
Just one second.
We're going usually, it's pretty quick draw on that stuff.
Meeting will be on the eighteenth.
By the eighteenth of January, if you could. Wonderful. All right, I'm going to move to the jury. It starts at nine AM, but if you want to call our front office at, um, five seven four, twelve hundred. Probably by the week before.